Christ replace.
I. Student flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands. For God into this world.
All right, approval of board meeting minutes for January eighth, twenty twenty five.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for January eighth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
It has been moved in second to approve the board meeting minutes for January eighth, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the meeting agenda.
I'll second though.
Has been moved in second to approve the meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any changes?
None.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to prove the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right. All right. Discussion items. Every student's engaged.
Right, right. Tasha kind of introduced and kind of talked and then turned it over.
Surprise guest. So Chris just asked me to come in and kind of address some of the rumblings or concerns that have been brought up to my attention. At the secondary principal, and then I wanted to share with you guys some of the hard work that both schools have been doing. For kids. I know there's been a lot of talk about discipline and discipline not being taken care of at school. And what I've worked with staff on in both buildings is there is what the law says we can do. It's in state statute. And then there is what our resources, the resources we have at the school. So. We are simply following what state law says we can do. By state law, if a kid's removed for. The majority of a class period, that's a class exclusion. Those are things that should be reported to the state whenever a child is removed for significant amount of time from their learning. So we're trying to shore that up by being proactive. This year Cory Bowles, the newest principal of the middle school, has done a really nice job of bringing in PDIS. And that's where we proactively teach our expectations around the school. And we do that in school after long breaks and at the end of the year. We have implemented buddy rooms. So for some of those low level behaviors like talking out, coming to. Class with your Chromebook not charged. And just to give you an idea, we wanted to get a good look at. What are our students being removed from class for? And so we have a Google sheet now, and what it does is teachers can write in that Google sheet what's going on. And right away Cory and I get a notification. And I'm going to be really honest with you. Some of the referrals we're getting are kids being sent up to the office for having rocks in their pocket. For not having a Chromebook that's charged. During the bomb cyclone, we had a couple of kids out in the pouring rain. So I just can't have, we just can't have that anymore. And so what we've done is we wanted to. Acknowledge that we need to work on our tier one classroom management for all teachers. How do you address low level behavior? Because it's not okay to act a fool at school. And so we're doing some of those things. We've implemented buddy rooms. So it's absolutely not acceptable for kids to disrupt the learning environment. Every teacher has identified two rooms they can send students to where they completed reflection sheet. And then we use that data when we're working with kids and talking with parents. And we've noticed a dramatic decrease in our discipline referrals. More kids in class more often.
Can I just quickly, when they get sent to a buddy room, is that not counting as exclusion time?
It does, but it's a ten minute chunk of time. And so.
I was just curious if that was an alternative to it, but you still have to count it if they stayed in that buddy room more than ten minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
At the high school, and we implemented the same thing at the high school. What we are doing at the high school is cell phones. Oh my word, cell phones. It truly is an addiction. It just is. And so instead of trying to punish the addiction out of kids, we have. Landon Max, the assistant principal of high school, we have brown bags. So when a teacher sees a phone, they give student a brown bag, the phone goes in the bag and it stays on the kid's desk. Because something we also know about students, many of whom live in poverty, the cellphone is their most prized possession. So we should, as educators, ask for their phone, take their phone, help those power struggles. They get the bag, they put the phone in the bag, they leave it there. And we're good. And so it also takes out that fight between teacher and student. So that's something we've done at high school. And we're not doing buddy rooms, but we should talk about that. And who's supposed to, um. At the high school, we had, last year, we had classes that were called rewrite classes. And they were intervention classes that were run under lap. And you would have a nine, ten rewrite and an eleven, twelve rewrite. This was supposed to be remediation for most struggling students. Let's say Mark Heeding is a tenth grader and he's in rewrite first semester as a tenth grader. He passes it. He would then go, you would think he'd go to a tenth grade English class. No. He was being put into a ninth grade English class. So in essence, we were having students matriculate through high school without getting the required four credits. Unless they're doing credit recovery. So what we did, and about sixty-six percent of our kids in those classes were not passing. So what we did is we dissolved those. We have now every ninth grade student gets ninth grade English, every tenth grade student gets tenth grade English and so on. We have the lap coaches that push in for support. And every single student will work on grade level standard with differentiated texts and tasks, but they will have grade level standards. And that caused right, why a stir, why a stir? I also said that we are no longer going to have tenth graders in ninth grade English classes. Ninth grade students will be with ninth grade students, tenth grade students with ten and so on. Um, so the high school, both schools have done a lot of work. It's been a lot of change in a short period of time, but all really positive for kids. Positives. So we just had a day long equity event last Friday. It was rescheduled from a weather cancellation. And it was pretty heartwarming to watch our high school link group. And our middle school web group worked with the middle school kids and Vincent, we gathered data about what we can do to make their lives at secondary. More joyful and inclusive. And a lot of their feedback was not just about, we need to work on student climate, but we have to work on how adults treat other adults. And how adults treat students. They were really clear about that. Lincoln Web is going strong. I don't have much more to say about that. We're going to have our second annual. Student led car show tentatively May thirtieth. And. It's awesome. They're getting donations from auto shops with broken down car parts that Tyler Renz's class is going to craft into trophies. The students, they have a Google classroom where they're talking about logos. There's going to be t-shirts. They're naming the event. We're going to have Travis Binrock's going to have a booth there, something mathematical. I don't really know. And we're thinking maybe what's going to be run through ASB, maybe we get food trucks. We just really want to make it a celebration. It was so popular last year. All student run. Passion projects at the middle school in our elective classes, what used to exist there were lab classes, which were intervention classes. The problem with that is kids were being placed in those classes even if they didn't need intervention. It's no bueno. So we, as Katie's working on developing our lap articulation. We implemented genius hour. And so those are what our middle school kids get. Where they are doing things like game design. Haley Anderson has a seventh grade. I think genius hour class where kids are creating electronic games, board games, and they're going to be at the STEM fair. Blake Foster's doing a history of film where they're working on playing evidence and reasoning in the writing. So taking the standards and plugging them into passion projects. Karina Brown. Worked with her kids before Christmas on holidays around the country and the symbolism and the history in those. And Tim Livingston, for example, had a project on Mesopotamia where students could choose how they presented what they came to learn about Mesopotamia. Then they had a gallery walk. We were going to launch a pilot. One pilot class per teacher using Empower Mastery Based Learning Proficiency Scales. We were going to start this on Monday. It became very evident because we have different teacher teams meeting to talk about what this could look like. And we're like, we're not ready to do this right. If we believe mastery based learning is good for students. Then why won't we spend time really dialing that in? And then when we're ready to deploy that and a tool that we understand, roll it out that way. And so just today, I let the middle school staff know that we're getting pause on our pilot. We're not ready. We're still going to work on mastery based learning and standards based reporting. And we are going to assess kids on standards. We're not going to do any more business about all passes or. Participation, or if we need to put in a category in the grade book, work, workplace skills, being on time, that's important. That should not be reflected in the reading, writing and math grade. So we are still working that collectively, elementary through secondary about what standards based reporting is. And just tonight I took a couple of phone calls from parents whose students came home talking about how. You hear this new fangled grading in Elma where parents aren't going to be able to see their kids' grades and. They won't get graded till quarter and how are we even going to know what they're doing? And I was like, good news for you. We're not doing that. And so we'll work this spring on putting together some communication and. Parent nights kind of talk about this is what standards based grading is. Here's why it's good for kids and just be. Just to slow down a little bit while continuing to work on standards based reporting. And I think that's all.
My turn participation. Any questions you'll play to any question?
She kind of gave a lot, but I thought it was a good introduction for, she's got a lot on how we're trying to get every student to feel like they're engaged. And I was more asking like on how this work can kind of lead into, are we want every student to feel like they belong? Well, like one of the things we've tasked within our strategic plan is to drive post-secondary enrollment. But if we're pulling ninth graders into a class that is not a cater requirement, cater's our university admissions process. So if you move out of ninth grade English into a rewrite class. You would not get four years of cater approved English. So in ninth grade, it would be decided you can no longer go to university. You no longer have a university eligible transcript. That is decided when you're fourteen years old. And then if you're turning it around fifteen, sixteen, seventeen as an eighteen year olds, even if you have reachieved those skills and now have that ability. The door has already been permanently closed when you were fourteen. So it doesn't make sense to. Have such early stages and teenagers like to shut them off on what their possibilities can be. And we begin seeing that in behavior permeations, right? A student is like, well, my opportunities have already been closed. So now you start seeing behaviors that hopelessness shows into a student and the rest of their behaviors on the campus. I mean, and that would happen to me if I felt hopeless. I don't know how I would be. So just having a level of empathy for our students. So we had a, Tasha did a great job saying, no, that's a problem here. That's why that is closed. And. Uh, we have to report. I think we have a big issue on. Understanding. And I do think our SOP will bring a level of clarity for all parties to kind of better understand each other. But Washington State has been very clear through state RCW, state statute, WAC. We have it within our teacher's contract and we have an board policy on what are reasons to remove a student from the learning environment. Um, the state has come in pretty heavily and defined it in state law. And we have principles that have come through the middle school that are clear on that understanding, but I feel like without an SOP. There's been a expectation gap between what staff are expecting and what the state law expects and what principals are doing. We have to report every student who is out, and if they've lost an hour, we have to go through and show what they've done. The only way a student can legally be out is if you can say they've taken a learning environment. So I've spent time sitting in the office and I never make it out of the office when I go to the middle school. I can make it out of the office out of almost every other building. But I think one time I was with the office, three students came up, no Chromebook. They were out of class the entire time for not having a Chromebook. Then another student, so three total. And the assistant principal is running students through her office meeting with students. Well, that would not be legally defensible. If the parents took us to task, we would lose that legally. So I think what's going to help us out is to have our students feel welcome. Is to welcome our students in class and understand that teenagers make mistakes and they need to grow. That's why we read our book, The Breakthrough Years This Summer. That's why I was aboard reading. It talks about how teenagers need an opportunity to grow and come back. Not get out, I don't want you. And, and it really kind of gives that research on how we can kind of create that inclusive environment. So I think I asked Tasha to kind of kick off on stuff she's working through because I do understand that it does create this. Oh my goodness, what is happening? But it is stuff that she is working through.
And I invite conversations, not that any of you have extra time. But these are conversations I've had with staff too, where I've shown them the RCW. And what the state says, and I'm like, here's the deal. This is what it is. And so really working with both buildings about being proactive and having welcoming environment to diminish the discipline we experience. And then of course, the really serious offenses, we just had a couple of issues at the equity event on Friday. And I issued significant a discipline because we're just not going to have those things go on at elementary school. And so where we can leverage that we are. But the lower level stuff like Chromebooks and talking out and those things. The state has said no.
We do appreciate the update. I mean, it's nice that have you come in and hear it from you. Not just, I mean, no offense to Chris, but it is nice to hear it from, from everybody else outside, not just from, from Chris himself. So. Thank you.
Of course.
Wow. Okay. On participation numbers between our activities and sports. We have about ten to fifteen percent increase from last year, twenty three, twenty four, which was also a good year. This had not been, sorry. Which was a really good year. This year was even more, and I just have some highlights here for you and then we'll turn it over to our exciting new program here shortly. But in, in the fall, we had fifty kids, fifty plus between high school and middle school doing cross country. Remember I text you that day, I saw him while on the field on a ninety degree day. There was fifty kids running. I just thought that was the easiest thing. In the winter, we have forty plus wrestlers, which is a about twenty percent increase from before. That program seems to be growing. This is the first year that we've had a C squad girls basketball. It's been a long time. So thank you for that position and a new position there. We have forty-two kids that are dual enrolled in powerlifting and their sports because it's a, it's an activity, not a sport. And there is fourteen now in unified basketball, which I will kick off. To Crystal here in a sec. In the spring, just looking at our numbers this spring, a drama team has thirty in their new play. There's ninety kids in track right now signed up. Yes, that's huge. We figure there's going to be about forty-five to fifty kids in soccer this year. Mike, would you think? Yeah.
Yeah.
So and then we just have a new position there. And that, that's the first time in a long time we've got a C squad coach there. Thank you for that. And then there's a, there is fifty girls signed up for middle school volleyball.
Wow.
Yeah, that's a wow. And then we'll also have a unified soccer team in the spring as well. Uh, I figured the spring right now has close to three hundred kids that are interested in sports and activities. They're over three hundred, right? Now counting the drama in there. So. It, we, the numbers are increasing and that's a good thing. So is our number of people that want to be involved as volunteers. We'll have about a dozen volunteers for the spring sports that are ready to be. Uh, probably your next meeting or the next one after that will be okay by you guys. And there's also more pressure on coaches and we've been given those coaches here. So it's a. This aspect of the sports is very promising. But we have hired a real go getter to be our unified advisor. And she has been dynamic, to say the least, Crystal Stanley. And we're putting together a, and when you get in that, I have a few things I'd like to say about the. What's that night, February sixth called?
Pack the Gym.
Back the Gym Night, which is, but anyways, without further ado, here's Crystal.
We laugh because he teases me about how much I'm always in his face about everything with his program. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to stand here or not, but I have to, I want to stand by the PowerPoint here. So I do want to say before we begin, I just found out that you guys as a board donated to us. So our team wanted to make sure to give you guys a thank you for that. So thank you so much. That'll be very helpful for travel and uniform. I'm going to give you an extra one to give to.
Give to Bernie.
Yes, perfect. Thank you guys so much. That will really help us out a lot. Um, I won't talk too long this time. I know last time you couldn't get me to leave, but I'm on camera this time, so I gotta. As you guys can see, Ron will talk a bit more about it, but we're having our first ever home pack the gym unified night. Sorry. Um, and so it's going to be really exciting. It's a. And we have cheer, we have the chamber choir coming, we have dance and drill. It's just going to be just like any other basketball game. Um, which is what we want. And so we're super pumped. If you guys could make it, it would be amazing. Anyone fitting in, it would be so, so great. Um, right, right, right now we have nine players that are consistently coming and then we got about six more that come and help out when we can. Because they're also playing other sports. So who we have signed up for every time is about nine. Um, and again, I just talked about the pack the gym night. Um, our other tournaments that are coming up right now are. Every weekend starting February first, if we place at the district tournament on the eighth, we will be going to state and Winachi. Uh, what's great is special Olympics helps pay for us for that travel and any overnight things as well. So that's really, really helpful for us. But, um, so yeah, so. We'll see how it goes. We're pretty pumped. Our coaches are. Great. They treat our kids like everybody else. They're out there running plays. They're above and beyond anything I would expect. And that's Ms. Thompson, our biology teacher, and Nicole Shannon is helping out as well. Um, so it's been a really great experience. So if we go to the next slide. I'm not going to go through and read all these, but I did want you guys to see some of the.
Did I just talk about that?
Yeah.
Hey, it's like a thank you that if you see the whole superintendent, place me through.
I'm glad, I'm glad we was on that. I was just waiting until we're done, but do you want it now?
Sure.
I mean, I saw him today, so we threw a bet down. Mike's got to come back and tell me what the bet will be. Obviously money would not be appropriate. So more like eye in the face or water on your head bet.
We could do it that night.
So we're thinking that night loser, losing superintendent. Has to have something. So Mike knows that there's a bet on the table. And Mike said he'll get back to me as they're working through on what that'll be and talk to his team, but his plan is to be here. So Mike and I are now building our presently building our wager.
And the kids are a lot.
So there is a pep assembly two days before that. Because we're playing Monty that night, the big basketball game. But that pep assembly will be able to get out the news to our kids, show up here. We're going to have a great night here. We talked, Guinness and I talked and we also talked about how we're going to not ticket this. Well, it would be kind of strange to take it this event. So I set the GoFan up to ticket for donations. And there's three levels of donations people do. There's entry is free, but if you want to donate, great, we'll have all that information out, but we're not going to pressure anybody. And you know, I'll have Dan give a, or whoever announces that night, he's gonna. Give that announcement, but that's kind of how we're going to approach this money wise. Every one of my workers, game workers is doing this for donation. Matt Farrelly over at this. I also got a call yesterday from the head official of the Grace Harbor basketball group. And she just wants to work. She just wants to come down and be part. So all this is going to be donated work and appreciate that. I think it's going to be great.
Yeah, and some of my excitement had us sending out the flyer a little bit early, but we'll do it before, like a week before and things like that. But it also was amazing to watch how fast it spread. I shared it, so many people off my page, I think most people in here did. And so it just spread and spread. And so. Um, I was going to speak about this on my last slide, but there's only three or four, I promise. But I also at the same time. I also at the same time sent out emails to all of the local superintendents, principals, ADs, special ed directors. Uh, yeah, I'm a little excited. But, uh, and so we had a great responses, North, not North, Ocosta, Aberdeen, Hoquam still wants to. So we can get a lead going in our county, so we don't have to travel to North Thurston, to places like that. But Grace Harbor County will be affected. We'll have this program in our county where we can build it where our kids don't really have. What Thurston King and those kinds of things have. We can start to build this program within our schools. So, um, Mike, I know wants to do it, superintendent at Hoquam, Aberdeen's people have reached out and I'm pretty sure. Um, I want to say that we can get on board too. We need at least three teams. It'll be us. Hoquam sounds again really interested. They're already doing this. And, um, so yeah, even if we can bring in. Westport, Ocosta, um, into play on Hoquam's team, if they don't have enough, just providing that opportunities for different kids. We've invited Oakville, but Oakville didn't have anyone at that time. So I mean, we just want to get our community, it's all about, about. Not only about the students seeing what's possible, but our parents seeing what their kids can do. That change through these type of programs is amazing and you can see some of it in the comments. Uh, go ahead and go to the next slide. So that's what we're doing right now. So this next semester was really exciting as we were, well, after tonight, hopefully we're able to hire an elementary. Unified advisor and we'll go more into that on the next slide about what expectations are on that. We're still looking for a middle school advisor. This is just a one year type hire because we got a grant through special. Olympics for that. We'll probably be able to get it again one more year, but that'll really help start to get our program out there. Um, and then spring sports, depending on numbers, our plan is to have a unified soccer team. But we have some athletes that want to do track. And we don't want to start a unified track team if track already exists and they can be a part of their high school track team. But what we could do is offer some support there for the track team because they have ninety some players out there. So I'll probably, um, in the next couple of weeks, send out a, a form on what, what students would prefer to play. And we might just have to choose one. Um, but we'll wait and see on that. But either way, we're going to have something going. In the spring and then in the fall, we already have it planned for unified robotics, which will then lead to them continuing. Continuing to be a part of the Skills USA robotics team. So it'll provide more opportunities for both schools. The best part is, is the robotics. State program is done at Liberty High School where Mark went to high school and I taught at. So it's still there from when I was there before. So it'll be really fun to go back up there. I don't know, we'll have to make you come along. So, um, spread the word campaign is the other thing we're going to be doing. It's not, it doesn't have to be a set date. Ms. Elliot's class is hugely involved with this. They're going to do a lot of student planning with Ms. Bucis's kids as well. On how we spread the word. It used to be spread the word to end the word, which was the R word. But now we find we're starting to reintroduce that back into kids. Um, so where do we do spread, spread the word inclusion? Special Tempeks offers us a hundred dollars through the store to buy stuff to help support that. Um, but there's different ways we can do it. So stay tuned for more info on that. And we're planning on doing that in all three schools. And again, the leadership class, Ms. Bucis's class will be a part of spreading that along as a co-partnership. Ms. Elliot's class is also, by the way, backtracking, pack the gym. Um, they're doing a lot for that. Um, they're going to do signs. I heard rumor about them getting pizza and stuff like that. So, so their class is really taking this on as well. They're going to be a huge support. I'm going to go to the next slide. Swear it's my last one. Um, so elementary campaign. Uh, when I was talking to Chris about what we should do about elementary and middle school, he's like, we got to talk to the staff. What do they want to see? What do they think will be important for our students? And some of the things we saw based on the programs that are offered through this program. Is a, is a, a hundred group. As you guys know, some of our, some of our students with high needs sit by themselves. Or they sit together. They're not getting that peer back and forth. Or when they do get it, they're sitting there, there's no one there to help them communicate back and forth to each other on either side. What do we do? How do we communicate? So these groups help with that. Um, reading studies where you might read a book about inclusion. Our leadership kids in the elementary might go with some of our kids with higher needs into a. PK class, into preschool, into kindergarten and read to them about inclusion and do an activity about inclusive actions. Um, fitness club. Open gym, the young, the young athletes, in order to participate in a, in a sport in this program, you have to be eight years old. Young athletes is for two to eight year olds. So this helps get those kids. And again, we're bringing in kids from. This beauty class, from, from a high school class and helping support that as well. So our middle school campaign right now, we know for sure we're going to do spread the word campaign. What we can do beyond that is just going to depend if we can find some. What we can do beyond that is just going to depend if we can find somebody um, to, to, to help with that part of it. High school campaign, spread the word, spring sports. And again, we're going to meet with those local school districts. Um, probably at the end of February. I'm in contact with the state unified person and they're going to be a part of that. Whether we're going to do one group, I don't know if we can get all those people with busy calendars at one time. But I'll, I'm, I'm going to meet with each, each of the schools if I have to. Um, because. This is one of the, once you guys see it in action and see how it changes the school community, it'll blow your mind. I've seen it, I've seen it happen. It's, I could stand here all night and talk about it. Um, financial support, always a huge concern for all of us. We need uniforms, we need travel, we need all that stuff. So you guys helped us out a ton. Again, thank you for that, but also pack the gym night. And I talked to the Grace Harbor Community Foundation, Jessica Hoover. I don't know if you guys know her or not. Um. She and I had a great talk about all the ways they can support us and she's really, really excited about it. So I'm actually working with Christie Kershaw, who was also asking about a grant. Some, something for, for some programs. And she said, hey, you guys can combine those and get more that way too. So that will, that'll probably be passing across Chris's test here soon, because sadly it's due really soon. So we'll have to get on that. So um, but um, it was also something, she said she supported our type of programs year after year with their. They have the big grant, but then they have, also have like five thousand or below grants that they have health programs like this out every year. So there's ways to find ways to get our program going before it can run itself. So constantly, I'm constantly trying to look at more of that. And Special Olympics does offer another grant again, but their job is to. Start us and then they wean away as we um, take care of ourselves. So. I believe that is it. Yes.
So I will let you know what our main, so Mike says he's interested. His only concern is he's like, you guys have had a lot more practices.
And I'm telling you, our coaches are like, they got plays, they got everything. So. I, they, yeah, it's been a good friendly competition and Kristen and Mike have been talking about it when they all meet together. And so, get the big, the big thing about sending that email out, I didn't expect anyone to actually respond. It was just starting to plant the ideas in their mind. So when I go to stalk them in a, in a couple of months, they'll be like, oh yeah, you were that girl, you know? Um, uh, but everyone can know. So I'm really excited that we actually had some people respond. So again, thank you guys so much for helping get this program started. Um, and for donating to us and Kristen, Ron, you guys have done a lot to get this started as well. So thank you guys though for that. Do you guys have any questions?
I think statistically, when we launched this, sixty-five percent, and I don't have the updated numbers yet, because we haven't, like, it's not. We're not supposed to roll it over. But in the last year, sixty-five percent of our basic ed population are involved in activity. Thirty-five percent of our students on I U P are involved in an activity. It was a very inverted number. So this work was like, we know statistically speaking, we have a population that is being left out of opportunity and engagement and participation. So, and we wanted to make a really concerted effort. And as uh, Mr. Clark said, we have large participation. Our numbers are going across, our almane eagles feel like almane eagles, just subjectively, you can't walk through the building now without saying much more royal blue. So you're seeing more students, more athletes wearing, so to know that we have a population that is also going to be in their royal blues. I think just does it for me. And, and are they on, do they have royal blues?
We do. We had um, basketball heads donated some of theirs that they've used in the past that will totally work for this year. Will look fantastic, but it'll be nice to have our own. Cause some of our, they're men's and some of our girls are not as tall. And so it'll be nice that we all have um, ones that work. And then really quick is um, Ron reminded me. It's our only home game. We need to have a senior night. So the pack the gym will also be a senior night.
For those kids, you know, and it's also better just thinking of this now is if we had a mockup of your new uniforms or warmups for next year. That's what they're donating for. It'll, it'll bring it more.
Yeah, we'll get on that.
I, for what you've done for our students, I just, Chris, I told you this before. Um, every time you speak. I told you this also before, I just felt like you like, you got so excited, you ran out of breath and I was. Excited too. So I was like, I felt that deep with it. I, I get so excited, I run out of breath sometime.
Yeah.
So I felt that deeply. So every time you talk, I just like walk away feeling like, alright, well now it's time to go like hit the gym or run a mile because Christmas coming.
Well, thank you. It's definitely one of my passions. So I'm excited you guys allowed me to bring it here and. And you guys will definitely see the rewards of it, I promise.
Can you share really quickly with a student, the students are super excited too. Asked me today, he was, hey, can you tell your pastor about our big game? Because then he can announce it at church.
Yes.
Oh, we can't. Thank you guys enough. I know you're thinking us, but it's not us, it's you guys. It's everybody that's putting this together and bringing it here. I mean, you can't thank you enough. And I'm, I'm excited. I can't, I'm really hoping for soccer.
I, I, you know.
I know. Alright, where are we at?
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Oh yeah, no, we don't need to do that. Now the next thing is board appreciation. Um, I hope everybody brought their appetite. Um, but I don't think the new gov, we have a brand new governor. So we do not have the new governor's proclamation, because the new governor has not released one. But being a board member is a very complicated job, because your job is to set the vision of the district. Manage the budget in a time where physically speaking, things have not been incredibly great for school districts. And uh, you know, and uh, and a really kind of be the voice in the ears and listen to the needs of the community on how we can best support our students. So with that, so all the way around. Make you walk.
Well, over that, I'd be leaning over Jamie and.
Felt like Jamie would get real tired of it real quick. Uh, Jamie Bailey.
Ryan, your start.
Thank you.
Michael Smith.
Alright, thank you.
And then with that, um, actually, we just found out Wasda has asked that we host in May, the regional Wasda meeting. To have all of Wasda here in Elma, or to have the regional boards in Elma to come see the work we're doing in Elma. So as part of board appreciation, Wasda has asked that we host a regional Wasda meeting. So not the whole state, but just our region.
That's cool.
That's cool. We only got that email today. And then Candace, we have, should we intermission real quick or?
I don't know, do you guys want to intermission or do it afterwards?
Let's get it out of here and then, and then we can do it afterwards. That way everybody can enjoy it and not stuff your face. Anybody would like to grab a cupcake?
Don't let us stop you. We're just going to keep working.
Mark, he will break the ice.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure.
I mean, he's already interrupted.
I, I hear he's pretty good at interruptions. Sorry. Okay, anyways, uh, moving on, uh, is there anybody with a public comment? Alright, unfinished business. Uh, approval of policy forty-two fifteen, use of tobacco nicotine products and delivery devices, second and final reading.
I'm in for the approval policy fifty-two, forty-two fifteen, usage of tobacco nicotine products and delivery devices, second and reading.
This has been moved in second and approved policy forty-two fifteen, use of tobacco nicotine products and delivery devices, second, final reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Approval of policy forty-two sixty-five, community education program, second and final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy forty-two sixty-five, community education program, second and final reading.
I'll second.
Has been moved in second and approved policy forty-two sixty-five, community education program, second, final reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Ah, new business, approval of baseball boosters fundraiser. Do we have somebody from baseball?
That's me. Um, so we're just doing what we've usually done in the past, the, the signs and the outfield, the donations for those from different businesses. And then the raffle ticket fundraiser and then one fifty fifty at one of our home games. So those three fundraisers are what we'd like to get approved.
Emily, I don't see concessions on here.
Oh yeah, probably because I forgot.
Do you want it on there?
Yeah. They didn't tell me to write that one down. Yes, concessions as well.
We can amend it.
I mean, I think common sense says we should.
Yeah.
But um, technically their fundraisers get signed off by like their building principal or Ron, right?
They're both here.
They're both right there.
Yes, I, so. Cause otherwise we'd be approving something.
You want me to fill out a new form?
Well, I think we have time.
Yeah.
That we could do, we could, yeah, we could, we want to formally, we could approve it at the next meeting.
Okay.
If needed.
Emily, if it makes things better at our, which it won't, um, but I already had a, a surprise conversation on the table for you next week.
For me?
Yeah. Um, next week, we're doing update on our facilities.
Oh.
I was going to ask you if you could come talk about some of our accessibility issues.
Okay.
So I was already going to ask. So I mean, I don't ask that makes sense.
I think we could do it live. I don't think we need to go through a whole nother piece of paper, but that's my thing.
We can do it either way, but I was, as I was telling Emily, our next board meeting on the agenda is going to include our facility update. Okay. And I was going to ask her to come to the next board meeting anyway.
Yeah. Okay, then let's just do it that way.
You want to just do it that way? You okay with that?
I'll move that we tabled the baseball boosters fundraisers and.
Is there anything you're starting right now on this?
Um, we would like to start the sign donation.
So why don't we just approve all of this right now then when she.
Yep. And then I'll do just concessions on the next one.
Okay.
I, I move for the footballs of baseball booster fundraisers.
Has been moved in second to approve uh, baseball booster fundraiser. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Sorry, I didn't make that.
No.
Busy, I just was trying to. Trying to figure out a way that we can make everybody happy. Sorry about the market. I really am. Uh, approval of superintendent mid-year evaluation.
I'm in for the approval of the superintendent mid-year evaluation.
I'll second it.
Has been moved in second approved superintendent mid-year evaluation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Uh, approval of Elma boy soccer booster fundraiser. Kevin.
Yeah, uh, just quick. I'm being thrown in here just a little bit. Um, uh, the fundraiser, we have uh, sponsored posters. Um, that's where we go out to businesses, uh, with a picture of the team. Um, and then also the online popcorn sales, uh, concessions and then a fifty fifty year apple.
Yeah, I'm for the approval of Elma boys soccer booster fundraiser.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second to approve the Elma boy soccer booster fundraiser. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Alright, reports, enrollment report.
So enrollment's holding pretty consistent. We're at the month of January fifteen, eighteen, twenty-six for our general in-person student population enrollment. Um, we are running on our total ALE eighty-two point nine six, some average of seventies or ALE program continues to grow. And are. Again, still kind of holding in the sixteen thirty-six of a twelve district F T E enrollment. About forty-two in open doors, twelve in ten transitional kindergarten and fifty-eight in ranked start. Any questions on our enrollment?
Ten, fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen. Yeah, probably. Sorry, I'm looking at the uh, I'm looking at the average. We have a fifteen total in transition.
How did you lose? That's kind of early for them to drop out.
We have another discussion. Alright. Uh, budget report.
Got copies of your budget reports. We're running about a five point three million dollar um, balance right now. Um, this month, at the end of the month, we'll know all our changes of our paybacks. I'll bring those to the next meeting. So you can see um, what our changes were through enrollment and um, carryover and what wasn't used. So we have to get back to the state.
Just to kind of clarify on that, we function off of a budget forecast till the month of January. In the month of January, the state converts us over to actual F T E enrollment. And then we have to balance our budgeted counts, what we thought our accounts would be with what we actively have moving into the month of February. So that's what. Sure, at least it's covering.
Any question on the budget?
No, I just want to, to go over again that the fund balance is obviously um. There to cover stuff that, that you know, over time and. I guess where I was going with this is that the percentage that the state actually wants us to have is a lot higher than what we currently have. And I, I want to say that almost every time, just to let everybody know why we have a fund balance that we do. So.
Fund balances to, um, what happens is, is we get our allocation from the states. And we effectively get it a day before our bills are due. Um, so the state wants us to, so if the state is ever late on allocation, which is not uncommon. If a state budget doesn't clear the governor's office by the end of June, and you roll into July. That school districts are required to have enough money in their fund balance to cover all their bills. Really targeted on that, like, where mainly the company issue is for the month of July. Cause then if you have to take out a loan, your school district is taking out a high interest rate payday loan to cover your July bills. And that is a extreme expense on taxpayers.
And this covers about barely two months if we had to. Yeah.
You don't even have enough to cover.
That's what I thought. Yeah, it's a little under that. Yeah, okay. Alright, yeah, other than that.
But I do want to say that I'm thankful that Chris and Lisa, you guys have done so much work on. Keeping our, our district afloat, you know, financially, because a lot of districts are struggling as we see all throughout the state. And, and it hasn't been easy and there has, you know, we're still trying to do what's best for kids. Um, you know, and I, but I know that there's been some areas of cuts that have been difficult to make and. You know, but I just want to commend both of you for the work that you've done on keeping Elma school district fiscally functional.
I want to take it back on that, saying staff who apply for grants to help out are really a bonus for me. Because they're keeping our fund balance up, because we have other sources to be able to meet the needs of kids. So thank you to our staff.
Yeah.
They're great writers.
They do a great job of finding that stuff. Alright, well, anybody have any other questions on the budget stuff that know there's quite a bit of packet stuff? Uh, if not, then donation report is also on the list. Um, that's just a report of everything that was over the, well, that's everything, but okay, yeah, okay. I didn't know if you were going to only put like what was over the amount that's in the policy, but that, that, that's great. Yeah. Awesome. Um, and then next on it is uh, reports, good of the order. Chris, you want to report first?
We uh, I kind of will, uh, kind of covered a little bit of it. We do have a, we were just asked to host the Wasda. Um, the Wasda regional meeting. Wasda will also be doing an article and Wasda direct on the Elma school district. Uh, so, and they're targeting April issues. So um, we feel like uh, we have people who've done things that we're really, really proud of. Um, today was interviews for the N A C program, so we're targeting our students that'll be enrolled. And again, I think we announced that, but the first school district in the state of Washington, the only school district presently in the state of Washington. That'll be allowed to certify sixteen year olds as nursing assistant certified. Um, to be able to have employment. And that's really built around the concept idea of HIPAA. That you can't have to be eighteen. So the state board of nursing is allowing us, so our students have been interviewing all day. And moving into a placement, um, moving into placement for next week, which will be a pilot. We have eight legislative tours scheduled. Um, to ensure that we are just in the spring, to ensure that we have, our minors are able to uphold HIPAA rights. While they are working in positions. While they are working in positions at the hospital. So we we are aware of the. We're very aware of the opportunity that has been presented to us. And today's interviews were built around ensuring that we can keep that opportunity going in a lo- a long way. But we're we're pretty practiced at it. We got the same provision when LNI allowed us to place sixteen-year-olds in industrial factories and run industrial equipment. So we also know as a district that we are also the best practiced at navigating on how our our minors are matriculating into adulthood.
Just out of curiosity, um what was the interest like? I mean, how many, do you know how many were interviewed?
Do you know how many she interviewed today? She just finished up, so I was more interested on, did she get a good batch? So.
I'm just curious.
I did not ask.
Exciting, and I think it's.
I didn't ask her on numbers. I was asking her.
Eleven.
Yeah, I walked through there.
Thanks.
That is. So.
It's exciting.
All right, so that has happened today, so that was our this our kind of update right now.
How many were they taken up to eight, eight, six to eight? I think there was a range, six to eight, yeah.
It's, we have to, and we did this too, when we launched that youth apprenticeship, you really do need to be picky. I mean, we're aware that teenagers make mistakes and we want our teenagers to grow from those mistakes. But on a year one, um the state could say. I mean, there's a lot of eyes on us, but the state could turn around and say, this was a bad idea and we're never gonna allow minors to do this ever again. So there comes a lot of optics and pressure that if there is a HIPAA failing, this could close the doors for all students in the state of Washington. So we really do need, we are looking forward with eyes wide open to keep this opportunity available for students.
Anybody else have something they want to say?
Uh, Tasha, maybe for you to spread the high school. I was at the capital today and um Meredith had a chance to be paged last week. And they said they still have page opportunities available that they would love to see filled. Um and Eric and I sat in on the orientation and I felt like it was a fairly inclusive environment of of what kinds of kids is really. And they've got to be fourteen, fifteen or sixteen. It was, it was a very young group. I feel like Meredith is one of the oldest for sure, but um. And she thought it was an amazing experience. And so if there are kids that you can think of or spread the word, I know they asked that they would love to have their spots filled.
I'll talk to Meredith tomorrow.
Yeah.
What's next up on the sports agenda? What's the next?
Right now.
That's what I thought, based on.
The Eagles play in Rochester and they're probably getting close to varsity. Speaking of Meredith.
I know, I hated missing regen tonight, but I didn't even check my phone. I'm like, I'm not looking.
The girls' senior night on a Friday. And boys next week are in Oakland.
In Oakland, all right.
In, no, I didn't want.
Oh, in Alma, okay. Good opportunity to get out. Um.
You did an amazing job at the whole Hall of Fame. We haven't had a four.
Oh, I think.
Oh, that's right.
We had, so it's sold.
Sold itself.
Yeah.
It it still is a really nice package and we gave honor where honor was due, but it was, it was a good night, I thought.
It's such accomplished people, but they spoke so well that.
But you know what? They also spoke really well of their community and and of. But the whole night was just, it felt, I kept thinking of Kevin, it's a great day to be an Eagle, but it had that, it had that feel about it, so.
We were in the, walked through the hall there between the commons and the gym and saw those new faces and I I put a smile on my face finally seeing new face, the plaques, the plaques are.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Finally, new faces in the Hall of Fame, I guess where I'm going with it, so I was kind of excited about that. So just seeing that too brought a smile to my face, because you go through there, you see the same faces and finally, you know, it's good to see.
It was a nice night though. Well done.
So.
Had a lot of help.
Uh, before we go to executive session, I just was gonna say next, uh future agenda items, the next meeting is February twelfth, we're gonna focus on kids. Um it'll be at the middle school and we'll also be doing a safety update and a facilities update. So and then there's other meetings after that, but um yeah, I think we're going to go in to executive session for fifteen minutes.
Emily, we will be at the middle school.
Okay, I just remember that day. I'll be at the middle school. You can't be, I'll just turn back around. I know.
Please don't leave without grabbing a cupcake. We will go into executive session, do you think it's seven?
Do you want us, do you want me to just, do you guys want to recess for a couple of minutes so we can enjoy a cupcake with them before we go to executive session? So if somebody would make a motion.
I move that we recess for until seven o'clock.
Then move a second into recess until seven o'clock. Any discussion? Seeing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We're at recess.
I won't be here in three weeks.
Hey.
Maybe.
Yeah. If anybody just wants to send me names.
Sorry, I'm.
I'll give it to Talia.
We're going to executive.
So.
Seventeen minutes. We'll be out at. I want to look like.
And you guys want to make the motion to extend or can you say we're going to extend?
Yeah, we'll be extending until seven thirty five.
Okay. Yeah, extending till seven thirty five.
I'll second.